Good. Fred, do you see what room I'm in right now? I don't know if this-
Oh, I do know exactly where you are. Look at that. I like that. I like your door too, that glass door. What a nice entry.
Yeah.
Very tasteful. Good for you. It's good to see you're in the office.
Linda, I wasn't able to find anything on that policy you were looking for. I looked through some of the files for Lisa today for the presentation she's got to do, and I couldn't find anything on it.
Yeah, it's in the minutes probably somewhere, but I'm not going to worry about it. We could always change that policy if we wanted to. Well, change it because we don't know what it was. I have an idea of what it is, so we should be okay.
Okay.
I admire you that you could put your hair up like that. My hair is so staticky that I was like shooting out that I almost didn't turn on my video, but I figured, hey, what the heck, we're among friends.
Is that for me?
That was for you, Kate. And who else did you hair up? Yes, and Charlene, you too. Okay, I have to ask Ryan, is that wallpaper behind you?
It is, yes.
It's actually, it's not like a background.
Oh, no, 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 it's not a background, yeah.
That is awesome.
Yeah. It was, it was put up when I was quite a few years younger, but-
Yeah, but you know what? When they put it up, they had no idea that there were going to be Zoom calls in your future.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, I know we haven't started yet, but I sent out an email a few days ago. I have to step off at 5:30 and I know I'm responsible for taking notes. I didn't know if anybody would be able to take the notes after 5:30 and then just send them my way and I'll prep them to give to the town. Does anybody mind doing that?
If you don't have a taker, Michaela, it's being recorded, so we will just listen to recording and fill in whatever was missed after 5:30.
Okay.
I was, I was gonna say, I'm not a great note taker, but I could jot a few things down and, you know, cross-reference it with the recording or something.
That'd be helpful, Catherine, if you want to do that for the key points, just getting the key points and then we can, we can backfill from there. That'd be great.
Okay, no problem.
Are we still awaiting the chair?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can, Lisa.
I'm not echoing, am I? I'm in, I'm still at my office right now, so.
No, we definitely don't have the problem we had before. Sounds great.
I apologize if phones and things ring. Couldn't get home in time. All right, well, we should get started, right? Think we have everybody? I apologize for signing in late.
Me too.
It's been a challenging day, but here we are. So moving on to the next thing for the day. I guess I am calling the meeting to order. And as far as roll call, I, I see some new faces that are present. So should we go around and state everybody who is present? Or would that get too confusing on Zoom? Do you want me just to read off the names?
Why don't you either read them or call them off, Lisa?
Okay. Um, so I see present as Catherine. And Scott. Scott, I don't, um, I apologize. I don't have your last name, Scott.
Oh, Johnson.
Oh. Thank you. And Michaela. And Paula Crocker. Linda Davis. Mayor Fred. Pete. Ryan. Kent Harding. One more, and Maria. So the first, um, item on the agenda is for us to review and approve the minutes from our regular meeting on January 19th. Which I'm assuming everyone had those minutes emailed to them and hopefully had a chance to review. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Catherine.
Need a second on the minutes.
A second.
And the next item on the agenda is the Youth Social Services Board Report for March.
Why don't you go ahead and vote on the minutes, Lisa?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So do we vote to approve the minutes?
Just say all those in favor.
All those in favor, say aye, or raise your hand, I guess.
No, yeah, that's everybody. No opposition, no abstentions.
I apologize. One day I'll remember how to do this. Okay, so now moving on to Kate for the YSS report.
Okay, so I have the Youth Services Report for the month of basically February into March. Again, this, this report can add information as we go. If there's information that anybody on the board would like to hear more about, this is just kind of a quick run of what I used to do, but I can adjust it as we go. So the Juvenile Review Board met once in March and we had one case to review. That is continuing on, so we're keeping that case open. So that will be an open case for the JRB. This year, the JRB has been relatively slow just due to COVID, lack of kids being in school. So less kids are getting in trouble in school if they're not in school. So so the JRB has been a little slow, but I'm sure it will pick up here going into the summer and into the fall. Our next hearing date will be April 12th. At this point, we don't have any intakes right now. Truancy Board, we've had two referrals in the month of February for truancy issues at the high school. Neither one of those families followed through with that referral. So when that happens, the referral is then sent back to the school and then the school makes the determination if they're going to get DCF involved in that case or not. Counseling caseload summary, I'm currently carrying 14 cases, which means I currently see 14 families and individuals for counseling services. Hannah, one of our interns from URI currently has a caseload of 11. Mohammed has a caseload of 11 as well, and Jeff has an active caseload of eight. So right now, total families are, as of the beginning of March, total families were 44 families receiving services from Youth Services at that time. URI interns Hannah and Mohammed will be ending at the end of April, so their internship year goes from mid-April to the mid-April of the following year. So they'll be starting to transition out. And we have two new interns coming from the University of Rhode Island who will start in April and take over the cases of Hannah and Mohammed, and those two interns are Brian and Alicia, and they'll be here through next April. We also have Jeff who will be continuing through December, if not May, depending on his graduation schedule. And he's from St. Joseph's University. I just put in grant information. I probably won't put that in every month, but I felt like that was important information for the board to know. So Youth Service Bureau is awarded a grant every year of a base grant of about $17,000, just over $17,000. And then we're awarded an enrichment grant of just over $8,000. So our grant funding that we get from the Department of Child and Family Services yearly is just over $26,000 for the program. And for our Juvenile Review Board, this past year, we were awarded $2,000 grant to help with our JRB kids in terms of kind of getting them services that they might need or transportation or into programs or camps and things like that. So are there any questions? Is there any other additional information you would like me to add to the, the report going forward?
I think it looks good, Kate. Thanks.
Okay, no problem.
I think it helps to start everything out, especially because there's so many new people.
Lisa, is it a good time for me to add something?
Sure.
Okay, so as some of you may or may not know, Mary Beth left to took a job, to take a job with Yale New Haven Healthcare System. So that role has been, well, as the beginning of April will be empty for about two months. But since then, I have hired Kristin Chapman. She comes to us from Mohegan Sun most recently, and prior to that, she worked for United Way. So she does have some social service experience. She will be filling the role of Mary Beth and will be also attending these meetings. Looking forward to her joining us. We'll have to get her up to speed, but I think she will do perfectly fine. I also wanted to let you know that the food pantry, the original intent was to move the Ledger Center School. We've been working on it for many months, but negotiations finally broke down on that fairly recently. So one of the other sites that we had expressed interest in was the Morgan Barn. That's the red barn on the kind of the lower fairground. That is our new home for the food pantry. So Public Works is working at a feverish pace over there to get that ready for us for May 1st and no later. So they're working on that. We will, I'll give you another update on that as we progress, but that's going to be the new location of the pantry. We're still going to do the vetting of clients through Town Hall, through my office until we have a different solution, but that's planned for right now. And then the other thing I just wanted to share is that the, we had a conference call about the American Rescue Act very recently, and the estimate is that there is $500 million of unpaid rent in the state of Connecticut alone. So the American Rescue Act is supposed to be providing some funding for those that are behind in rent, but I suspect that once eviction moratoriums and things like that are lifted and whether, you know, people's unemployment benefits run out, I think that the, the need, it's been slow to develop on at least the food pantry, but I think the need will ramp up in terms of social service needs. So stay tuned on that. And, you know, if you do hear of things, please, please let us know so we can try to assist people. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to our old business, and thanks for the update on Mary Beth that we were discussing in the last meeting, getting like the information out that the social services does provide. And so Mary Beth is going to reach out to, I believe it's Scott, who was going to speak to us because we had concerns about the senior center and make sure that folks were getting access to the services and know about the services. So I would like to welcome Scott, and hopefully this is a good time for him maybe to share with us your needs or just kind of educate us in general.
Um, okay, yeah, I mean, I was just told kind of do attend, so I didn't really prepare a presentation or anything, but we've been working on a number of things and also having a number of issues with COVID as well. I mean, we've ramped up our Meals on Wheels has gone up drastically, which is good because it also allows us to check on the homebound seniors and distribute information that way. We're working currently with our park and rec company because one of the issues is getting in contact with a lot of the seniors. We are currently working off in an Excel sheet where we're making calls weekly and Ginny's checking off, you know, she left a message or she was able to talk to them. And then we're finding out that a lot of the information that we have through our registration forms is inaccurate. So we're actually working on a new system that will go through the park and rec registration system. They'll actually track membership through the senior center in the future and allow us to send out email blasts, text messages, and possibly even like robo calls, which will allow us to hit the entire population in that system much easier than, you know, the manpower that it takes to, you know, make the physical calls, you know, weekly. With vaccines, it's been quite a challenge for us and all the other senior centers in the area. There's many different ways to get the seniors vaccinated. And it kind of just depends on the week, what's the easiest way to go about it. A few weeks ago, we had access to a clinic in Waterford, which was a huge help because we were actually able to complete a fillable form for seniors and actually get them registered for the vaccine without them having to call and, you know, wait on the phone for four or five hours or go and use the VAM system, which is very difficult for them to navigate. We've started to try and offer technology classes because one of the other concerns is the isolation caused by COVID. So we're trying to teach a lot of the seniors to use Zoom, those virtual platforms so they can actually talk to their family. And we're doing it by appointment only, so they can set up an appointment, come in and bring in their own device, which we're gonna then show them how to use it. That way they can get in contact with their family, you know, attend meetings. And then also we can use that time to help them get scheduled for a vaccine if they're having trouble as well. But luckily, as things have progressed, we're getting more and more options for the vaccine. We have a number of phone numbers that are working and they're a lot more accessible than what we had about a month or two ago. Slowly, things are getting better, but hopefully coming out of COVID, we'll be a lot more prepared if anything like this ever happens again with our, the update to our system that we're doing to hopefully be able to easily reach and track all the senior members. Currently, it's all paper forms and binders, so it's been a tremendous haul for the staff to, you know, just reach it out to the seniors in general.
I noticed as, as a senior who has gone to the senior center in the past, I noticed there are, it looks like there are several of the activities that are virtual now. And also it looks like the, there's a virtual social event and I'm, and a pickup lunch on Wednesdays. And I was just wondering, you know, what has been the response to that? If you've had people involved or has that been more of a problem, you know, with the technology?
The technology has not picked up as we would have hoped. The social hour is, you know, we've had a few people, Paula's laughing because she, sometimes it's, one week was just me and her. And slowly we got two or three people going and it kind of died down. The virtual classes have been, we haven't seen much success. No one's, they, they're calling, asking when it's going to be in person. They, they just don't, the seniors don't want to do it virtually. They just don't like looking through the screen to do yoga or a Tai Chi class. The lunches, however, have done extremely well. I mean, we have weeks where we have as many as 45, 50 lunches that were, you know, serving for pickup. Right at 12 o'clock, the line outside my office goes up and around the road. So that has been very successful. And then we're able to put flyers into those lunches as a way to kind of distribute some information when needed. Because that's been a difficult thing, you know, using Facebook or, you know, we do have some emails. We tried to email blast, got a little bit of resistance from that, from some people. And then with the phone calls, but then also we don't have contact information for every senior in town, which is the other thing. There's people we might not be reaching out to because they've never, you know, come into the center, filled out a registration form. So we don't have, you know, information to reach them. And that's one of my concerns is that there might be people out there. So we're also hoping for word of mouth. If anybody knows, you know, seniors that haven't had the vaccine, they're having trouble, you know, to give us a call so we can try and help them out. But transportation still, that's been continuing the whole time and that's been actually doing, we've seen a little bit of an increase in that now that the doctors are seeing people in person again. And then with the vaccine as well, we've transported people to get their shots.
And we will look into reopen the senior center very soon. Something that Scott and I talked about and we kind of targeted June 1st. It's entirely possible it could be before that too, which will definitely help that population.
Yeah, I have a meeting actually now with all the areas, area senior center directors, and then I think another one with all the directors in the state next week to talk about reopening. Originally, we were thinking possibly, you know, May, June, but now with the, the change in the vaccines, that could be potentially even sooner. With outdoor events possibly starting in April. On the indoor stuff, we're thinking more June, but we're going to find out next Wednesday if that might be accelerated with the change in the vaccine rollout.
Right, so just so everybody knows, it's the 45 to 54-year-olds that starts registration on Friday, and on April 5th is they've lumped together the last two cohorts. So it's six, eight, 16 to 43 is the last group. I don't know how many people that amounts to in Connecticut, but probably a lot, but that'll be the last group. So if, if all those people get vaccinated, they choose to sometime in April, we should be in good shape for something in May or early June, as Scott said.
Thanks, Scott. You, you really, you hit on, I think, a lot of the questions and concerns that we brought up in the last meeting, and so that was really helpful. Moving forward, is there any other old business that anyone wanted to discuss? So is there any moving on then? Is there any new business?
I just want to say that Youth and Social Services will be attending the Community Relations Committee meeting on April 7th at 6:30 to give a public presentation about what the services that Youth Services provides the town, as well as the services Social Services provides the town. So if you want to get that out there, if anybody you know has any questions about what we do, that would be a great place for them to come and listen to a spiel about it.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Kate. I was gonna say, next, Mike Washington reached out to me and has asked me to present at that meeting as well. So I will go through some old Social Services information I have and just share with that what the town provides as far as with the food pantry and the holiday gift giving and all the different events. I'm going to be doing some research between now and then, but Kate has offered to help me with that and I appreciate it. And all the different events. I'm going to be doing some research between now and then, but he has offered to help me with that and I appreciate it. Uh, one thing that I did want to ask the group, I thought of it just yesterday when I was looking through the. Um, Parks and Rec fire that comes out through the town. We get every year where you can sign up for different classes. I couldn't see where there was any information in there about the food pantry or social services, and I don't know if I just missed it. Does anybody else recollect receiving that in the mail and knowing if there's information in there?
I didn't look at the one that just came out yet, but I remember the winter one, the one. Before and it did. I remember it saying like Kate gave um. If some, some blurb, sorry Kate, I apologize. Some blurb about the um, youth services. They had a little section and then the food pantry. I don't know the most recent one though. It looks like.
Yeah, has it? Okay, good. Is that because I know last meeting we were trying to research ways of getting the information out to folks. Um. And I know that's, you know, something obviously every town member receives. So I just looked really quick, but I was hoping that we were represented in there and the different services were. So that's good news.
Yeah, the intention is that every, every quarter it will be in here. So, but what we may want to do so it doesn't get stale and the, the editor does not want to print stale stuff is. We can freshen up some of the little, what I call snippets. So we have the basic information about how to contact us. But um, there can be other snippets about things like, do I qualify? And we can put a, a brief. It's just a one paragraph read of, hey, do I qualify for this? And, and maybe that would be helpful for people too. So. Something to think about for the next meeting so that ahead of the next deadline, we could have uh, one or two fresh snippets for that.
Yes, that, that sounds good. So I think one of the discussions that came up in the last meeting that there are people who have never had to. Receive support from social services, having to now due to COVID. And even just making that phone call, it can be difficult. So being able to just read about it if they qualify. Um, just a new group of people that have to navigate a social service system that probably. Never had and are also feeling ashamed or um. Embarrassed by that fact and we don't want that. Obviously we want the services to reach everybody that needs them. Is there any other uh, new business to discuss? Ryan?
I don't, I think this is new business, but last time we talked about technology issues and other COVID related problems. Um, with high school students. You know, whether they wouldn't be attending classes as much or if they're feeling some social isolation, similar little problems to the seniors. I think we want to discuss that as well.
Yes, um, that did come up at the last meeting and we had talked about. And forgive me, I've got to check. I believe someone on the board was going to check in with the school. Do we have somebody represented from the school system?
Um, I don't work for Leger Public Schools, but I was in the high school as contract work. I don't know if that's what you mean.
That works for me. Um, it maybe is, I mean, I don't know what's happening in the school system. Is there a concern that kids are not going to. Atticulate to the next level? Are they not having the access to what they need? Technology?
We definitely have, um, the families of Leger do have access as far as it comes, um, like. All the families do get access to Chromebooks as needed, uh, dependent on the grade. Now that we are actively moving towards four days a week, the preschool, pre-K, kinder first, second and sixth. Are already four days a week. Um, and then starting on March twenty-second. Uh, third, fourth and fifth and seventh and eighth will be four days a week. They do not have rollouts specifically for the high school at this time. However, that will be like the next step. Um, and there is more, um, I guess. Structured Wednesday learning for the elementary and middle school grades and as well as high school. Um, so there's more for them to do on Wednesdays when the entire district is at home. Um, but if any of the families, I know um. High school comes out with it and I like my kiddo is in the elementary and they get newsletters um, from the principal and every newsletter has. Like how to if they're having um. Technology issues that comes from the superintendent, um, and the, and all of the school principals. To be able to support the family. I know at the beginning of the year, there was distribution and that sort of thing, but it is ongoing, like if a family needs support. As far as numbers, and I don't know if anybody knows more than I do, um, but as far as kids returning. They're pretty steady with returning to four, uh, four days a week. There are still families that continue to be. Full opt-out. Um, and I know, I think I spoke to this briefly as far as, and I think Kate spoke to it for truancy. If COVID is the true reason why they are um. Not going to school or if it's a more school avoidance. Issue that's happening. Um, and I think that for us in, in the mental health field, really watching that. Um, because the families continue to have the option to be opt-out. I don't know if that helps if I gave you anything.
No, thank you. It does help. Um, Ryan, was there other pieces to that conversation that you thought we should address?
Well, the, the only, only point was should we contact the school or try to investigate if there are any specific. Issues or needs we should address as a board? Or do you think unless something's brought to our attention, we should? Forget, let, let the situation be, I suppose.
I think that's a good question. I'm not sure if this board really has the ability um. To. Um, let me think how I want to say this, to do anything specifically in the school system. I think that what Michaela's speaking of, like if the families are having, like the truancy issues can also go through um. The, well, the JRB is a little different. Kate, could you correct me? I know I sat on it briefly before COVID. There was a truancy. Board at the high school?
Yes. So there's a truancy board and then we have the juvenile review board. So the juvenile review board are. Is a board for any teens twelve to eighteen who are arrested for a minor juvenile offense. Um, the truancy board is specifically for kids that are struggling with truancy issues. So truancy is um. Ten absences within a year. I, I can't think of the numbers off the top of my head, but there's like a certain amount of numbers in the first three months versus like. The amount of school missed in a year to be habitually truant. Um, in years past, those kids would be referred to juvenile court. However, the juvenile court system is trying to pare down and keep kids out of the system and keep kids in community diversion programs. So youth services became the hub for truancy in each school, in each district that they have a youth service bureau. So the kids that are, are referred for truancy, basically the school has to do everything that they could possibly do to meet that kid's needs within the school system. So they have to, you know. Have PPT or IEP or five oh four meetings with those families to make sure that everything is in place for that kid to try to be successful in that environment. Um, it might be, you know, VLP classes. It might be. Adjusting a schedule um, to try to help that student attend school, but if that doesn't work. Then the referral would come to the YSB and then I would reach out to the family and try to set up an intake and then. They would come in front of the board and the board would try to help the family get the services that they need in place to make the kids successful and want to be at school. If the family does not follow through with a referral with us, then it, that referral goes back to the school. And then the school has to, to make the decision, do they continue trying to put these interventions in place for this kiddo or do they make the decision? To go through the DCF process and look at it as a neglect, situational neglect, which is, which is difficult to um. To push for with DCF with a, with a high school age kid, but there are definitely some cases that probably constitute that. Um, whereas other cases are more kids choosing that they don't want to go um, and would really benefit from some of the services that we could help get in the family to, to make that more feasible for them. Um, so that's the difference between like the truancy piece. And the JRB piece.
Um, I'm wondering, uh, you know, there's been a lot of talk about um. Uh, mental health issues with um, youngsters who have been out of school and so on and, and I'm wondering. The mechanism for kind of addressing those issues and getting those. Uh, families or children who are having problems or young people. Um, connected with some kind of mental health assistance or to the counseling. Uh, services if there, you know, if some kind of outreach is being done or will be done in that regard.
So I think we've worked, I know youth services works closely with each one of the schools, the elementary schools, the middle school and the high school in town. Um, and they know that we're a referral source for them. So we do get a lot of referrals from the school and I think the school will provide our name when, when it's appropriate. Um, to the family to reach out, but it's a voluntary service. So a family can choose to get involved or choose not to get involved. So there's definitely times where I'll get a referral from the school stating this kid definitely needs some counseling support. And I'll reach out to the family and they'll deny the services. So there's only so much that we can do, but I do think the school is providing the referrals needed. For the families that they're identifying.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And also is one of your referral partners too, right Kate?
What is it? I'm sorry.
Uh, Carissa also refers to you.
Yes, from the high, from the high school, the social workers Laura Heatherington, who's a social worker at the middle school and one of the elementary schools. As well as Carissa Anderson, who's the high school social worker and another elementary school social worker. So. So I have relationships with all of these people and they're, they're very aware of what youth services does and the counseling that we can provide free of charge to families. So we definitely get the referrals in or our name is definitely getting given out. It's just. Families might not want to reach out or I reach out and they choose not to follow through with services.
Also to go off um, Catherine's question. There, we were talking about earlier how there are definitely some stigmatized about receiving help and how people who haven't had to receive help before are feeling uncomfortable and. I guess not ready to, you know, reach out. So for high school students, I guess all students in the Leger Public Schools. Are they being made aware of the counseling uh, services and assistance that is available to them or the other announcements? Are, are the teachers. Expressing that because as someone who is in high school, talking about uh, counseling and issues like that is something that. Students aren't comfortable with that much. So making it not so much of a stigma might, you know, obviously would, would be helpful. So having the conversation. And being more open about counseling services could be a, a avenue to pursue. Are, 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 is that information being distributed to all of the students or maybe not so much?
So I'm not sure how the school distributes the information. I know that a lot of referrals come from the guidance counselors. So I think the guidance counselors and the school psychologists are the ones that are identifying the kids. And then they kind of present that information to the kids that are identified. I'm not sure. I think this is one of the things that I'm hoping to achieve at the April seventh kind of public. Forum is to get our name out there because I think we've kind of been like this secret little thing in town that like. You have to know someone to know someone to, to get the name, but it's really not that. Like anybody could call me at any point in time and receive services. Um, so I think you're right, Ryan. I think like to get. The idea out there that there is this service in town that anybody can utilize that lives in town. Um, and has a kid or goes to any one of our schools is really important. Um, I know that we've, you know, had flyers up at different schools or had pamphlets out at different schools. I've. I've done presentations at different schools for different things like um, civics in action and stuff like that. So. So, you know, I've, I've been in town for a while, but I think you're right. There are a lot of, a lot of kids that don't know that we're here and a lot of families that don't know that we're here. So that's definitely something that. You know, we're still working to get that out there.
I, um, I like uh, what you said and Ryan's point as well. I know, um, when I lived in Pittsburgh. Uh, that we often would have um. Presentations in the school. I don't know how the schools are here, but a lot of times, you know, the kids, then when they hear somebody who maybe is a counselor or social worker. Um, that they might even um, you know, come up and ask the person about the services and so on. And it gives some kind of personal. Connection so that it deals somewhat with that stigma that Ryan was talking about in terms of kind of. Students being afraid to get uh, help or, you know, thinking it's not a cool thing to do.
Hi, I'm just, um, I have a senior in the high school. And with Co- with COVID, Ryan, just being like such a um, unique thing, I guess for everybody, especially children, like. I think, I don't know if it always. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be discouraged by the lack of, of outreach for, for counseling. Because I'm wondering if that's actually what everyone needs. Like, for example, I know in our situation. Like online school just was not, just was not a thing. Like literally I had a kid that was getting. Um, straight A's for the first time ever and then COVID hit and literally when everything got canceled, just went downhill. And it was helpless. Like there was nothing I could do or suggest because there was nothing going on, you know, to, to really help with that. And he, long story, he ended up advocating for himself to be in school four days a week and he got approved. So he's, so that's great. Um, but I, and I don't know if it's the role of this board or not because of my lack of experience with the board. But I'm also wondering if beyond mental health and services, if we should be thinking of something more like, um. And this might be more of a, of a Parks and Rec or maybe need a crossover into Parks and Rec. But I'm wondering if there's something more of an activity related because I, I know in my experience. It was more the lack of structure. So it was a lot, it was, it was, maybe there was like depression, but it was conditional. It wasn't like a clinical depression. It was just. Unmotivated, you know, lack of anything to do and lack of structure. And I'm wondering if there's anything we should be thinking to, that crosses over with Parks and Rec. That provides more for older teens.
So we're, we're working on something. I don't want to jump the gun really yet, but me and the superintendent are more for the younger kids in the summer camp are trying to work on partnering together. Um, and actually provide some educational activities during summer camp as a way to kind of offset some of the possible learning loss. Uh, due to COVID, we're, it's literally just a conversation at the moment that we've started to have, but. We are hoping to incorporate and work with the school during, during the summer and address those kids in summer camp. Uh, this year to hopefully offset some of the, the COVID. Um, related learning issues. Um, but I mean, we still have to work out the details, uh, just, just an idea that we started discussing and hopefully will. Become something that we can implement this year in the summer camp.
Any further discussion on that or any other new business?
I'm, go ahead.
Oh, no. Um, I would say last point. Um, to, to Charlene's point. I think uh, she's talking about the lack of social interaction because if you talk to any. Uh, you know, any of my friends, we talked to any high school student who had to learn remotely. The biggest issue and uh, thing they miss from school is, is the people being able to have these interactions, being able to learn with other individuals. And I know Leger High School is or has a trivia night or some. Online activities for students and families to engage in. But maybe the question is, are those efforts enough? Is there enough activity and engagement for? Students to really feel connected because social isolation and feeling distant. It's, it's really a paradox because we're in the most connected social media era ever, but yet people are still so isolated and disconnected. So maybe having, you know, a game night or even a digital video game competition or something that would. Be, you know, directed to the interests of high school uh, age kids would be something to look into. Because having those uh, connections would, was really essential, I believe.
We, I have been discussing with some of the other. We, I have been discussing with some of the other towns. I know you mentioned like, like the video games about doing like e-leagues for like the high scores. It's something we're kind of looking, it's a new, new area for Parks and Rec, for, you know, virtual sports. But that might be some way to, you know, at least you're talking over, you know, a microphone and doing something together versus, you know, social media. It's something we're taking a look at right now, actually myself and some of the other area rec departments and possibly doing leagues. And then at the end happen, you know, the winner of each town play each other. It's hard with COVID to, you know, bring those events we typically would put together, you know, that actually allows socialization, but trying to adapt.
I know in the, in the event planning sector, you know, there are ways to still have events there, you know, there's, there's a way to be compliant and still move forward with in-person events. But of course, yes, it's a touchy, a very touchy subject. But it is within state mandates acceptable under certain conditions. So I would almost think, I mean, at least I know from our point of view that the virtual, you know, because everything's virtual, you know, the schools in the, even college tours are virtual. I think, I think the kids that are, and Michaela brought up a great point that some kids might be using virtual because they don't, you know, they never wanted to, to be in person anyway, which is a whole nother issue. And then you have the ones that like, like school is their only interaction. Because I think what Ryan was saying, we, prior to a pandemic, we already live in a time where our kids don't know how to interact, you know, and it's a, it's a dangerous place to be. And then you throw this on top of it, you know, and it's like really seeing the impact kind of just compounded on that. So I would be curious to think, to maybe come back to the table next time with what, what do we feel? And I'm speaking from, because I'm an event planner. So I'm always kind of like, well, you know, we can do better than, than virtual. But of course, I don't want to put anybody's, you know, in jeopardy. You're talking about the senior center getting back together. I mean, there's ways to gather outdoors and be compliant and be safe. And I'm wondering if we need to be thinking about, you know, like some, some towns have a, what's it called? When you have like a teen rec place where they have like a swimming pool and stuff like that. You know, we don't have anything like that, but we do have, we do have outdoor space. So, so maybe we need to be thinking about some things that we can offer to, and specifically to teenagers. I think we do a really good job with the, with the little kids, to be honest.
Yeah, we're working hopefully for the summer to actually get more in-person. We're working on a possible movie night series. And then actually we had someone reach out about running an outdoor, like pickup basketball for the younger, that younger age group. Because we have the adults league, adult pickup league. And they approached us wanting to do a pickup basketball league for that younger age group. You know, the high school and then the young, you know, twenties, because they're not, you know, allowed to use, you know, utilize the time with the men's league.
Kate, was there something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, so this is on a, a kind of a separate topic. So I didn't want to jump in unless everybody's feels like they've been heard on that topic. But youth services, Leger Youth Services is going to be partnering with neighboring youth services in New London County or Connecticut Youth Service Bureau in the county to bring the indie film, like, which is a, an indie film based on like social media to the town. So what will happen is the week of April 4th, which is Monday through April 8th, we'll have the free screening of the movie for anybody in town and any students in town that want to access it. On April 8th, there'll be a live screening as well as a followed, follow-up discussion with experts on the movie. So you don't have to be part of that discussion if you don't want to, or parents might want to be part of that. Working with the superintendent to get the word out to all of the schools will hopefully be able to put some flyers and like media blasts out so that families in town can access this film free of charge for those four days. And then there will also be that expert panel discussion on that Thursday evening at seven o'clock.
What, what was the name of the film again?
Film is like, L I K E.
Thank you.
Yep.
Lisa, if I may, I just became chairman of the senior commission. And what I'm asking is if you could just add me to your list for meetings. Paula is also on the commission. And from the senior standpoint, it's useful to know the social services aspect. So you can put me on the email list. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Does anybody else have any new business they want to bring to the board?
Just one question to clarify, what is the event occurring April 7th? I believe you're mentioning.
So the, oh, the event for like the Community Relations Committee? So not the like film, right?
Uh, no.
Okay. So Community Relations Committee is a committee of our town council who are coming together to kind of highlight some of the town programs that we have and to get them out there to anybody in town that wants to join that meeting. So the meeting's at 6:30. It's going to be, I think it's a Zoom meeting, right, Mayor? They do it by Zoom. And so they'll have the meeting via Zoom and anybody can join, anybody from the public can join that meeting and hear a presentation by youth services and social services or Lisa describing the programs that, that we provide the town at that meeting and ask any questions. So it's a public forum to get some of these program and information out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thanks for all the great discussion tonight. This was a really good meeting. You know, I, I've been freezing up a little bit, so I apologize. My connection is, keep telling me I'm unstable. If that, if that covers everything, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Can second that.
Good meeting, everybody. Have a great night. Lisa, I will be in touch with you to talk about those snippets ahead of the next Events Magazine.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks. Have a great night.
You too.